...the command, but it's triggered by an incident which is being actively investigated. So in all those ways, that's what happens.
Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate your testimony. We'll be on break till 10:40 when we'll be hearing from some civilian sexual assault investigators. Thank you again.
And we're live now at the U.S. Capitol where Vermont Senator Bernie Sanders just kicked off a climate change town hall. Live coverage for you here on C-SPAN 2.
A record-breaking heat wave and things just keep getting worse. Wildfires rage as far north as the Arctic Circle. A suffocating severe heat wave.
Things like tornadoes, which you normally don't get.
At least 24 deaths have been blamed on the storm.
Record rainfall is devastating entire communities.
My neighbor called me up and he was like, "The fire's at the edge of our community." And he said, "I'm gonna go out there right now with some shovels and a hose to try and fire it out because the fire department was just spread too thin."
I know from the facts as a senior climate scientist that climate change is real and it's affecting us now.
The good news is that all over the world, people are beginning to figure that out and beginning to step up.
There are alternatives to using intensive carbon-based fuels. We should be moving in that direction.
Never before has there been such a unifying issue as climate change.
The time is now. We don't have any more time.
It's all about everyday people coming together and believing in their ability to change this country.
For me, that is meant plugging my voice into the legal and the justice system to hold our government accountable.
I'm willing to go to prison for what is blood and I'm willing to go again and again and again until I see some results, until we all see a better life.
The hope is in the resistance.
Who will stand with me now for mine and future generations to inherit a healthy, just, and sustainable planet? Who will stand with me now?
(Singing) Stop us, the weaklings coming back.
I am Senator Bernie Sanders of Vermont, and I want to welcome all of you to the fourth national town meeting that my office has sponsored. Our first one dealt with the need to make sure that healthcare is a right in this country, not a privilege, through a Medicare-for-all system. Our second town meeting dealt with the grotesque levels of income and wealth inequality. Third town meeting dealt with foreign affairs and the Iran nuclear treaty. Tonight, we are dealing with what the scientific community tells us is the great crisis facing our planet and facing humanity, and that is climate change. Before I go any further, I want to thank the live audience, folks in this room and the spillover room downstairs for being with us at the Hart Office Building tonight. I want to thank the panelists who have come literally from all over the world to be with us tonight. And I want to thank the progressive online media outlets who are helping us livestream this event, and they are The Young Turks, Now This, ACT TV, Attention, The Years Project, The Intercept, The Nation, and The Guardian. And interestingly enough, I want to thank two mainstream media outlets, CBS and CNN, for livestreaming this as well.[255.43][255.43](Applause) And I also want to thank the many, and I hope I'm not leaving out any, but many environmental organizations for helping us get the word out about this event, and that includes Greenpeace, 350.org, Sunrise Movement, Earth Guardians, Green4All, The Dream Corps, People Demanding Action, and Friends of the Earth. And finally, I want to thank all of you all over the country and in fact throughout the world who understand that it is absolutely imperative that we get our act together on this issue and that countries throughout the world stand up and take on the fossil fuel industry and transform our energy system away from fossil fuel. Let me just say a word about tonight, and I should mention that unlike commercial television, this event is not sponsored by ExxonMobil.[325.19][325.19](Laughter/Applause) Nor is it sponsored or paid for by the Koch Brothers, who have made most of their fortune in the fossil fuel industry. Let me briefly explain the format for tonight. We're gonna have five separate segments, each led by an expert in the particular aspect of climate change that we will be discussing. And let me mention their names now and thank them very much for being with us, and I will formally introduce them during their part of the discussion. And these expert panelists are Dr. Brenda Equrezal, Shotez Khat Martinez, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, Mayadell Ross of Georgetown, Texas, and Dr. Kamala Baush. These expert panelists will be questioned by our ongoing panel, who you're seeing right here in front of you, and they'll be here throughout the evening. And that panel consists of three individuals who have spent much of their lives in the fight against climate change and in the fight for environmental justice. And they are Bill McKibben, who is not only an outstanding author, who has written some of the most important books ever written on climate change, but he is an extraordinary international organizer and one of the co-founders of 350.org. We also have up here tonight, Shailene Woodley, who is an award-winning actress, who has devoted much of her adult life to environmental activism and is also on the board of Our Revolution. And lastly, we have with us somebody who I think many of you know. Van Jones is a political commentator on CNN and has long been an environmental activist who served as President Obama's special advisor for green jobs and is the author of several bestselling books on climate action. So, let's get the evening going, and it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Brenda Equrezal, who is the Director of Climate Science at the Union of Concerned Scientists, which is one of the most important and effective environmental organizations in the world. She is a co-author of the recently released Federal Climate Change Report and the chapter which dealt with economic costs due to climate impacts. Dr. Equrezal, thank you so much for being with us. Let me begin by asking you this question. President Trump has indicated on many occasions that he does not believe that climate change is caused by human activity, and he does not believe that climate change is a threat to our planet, and on more than one occasion, he has described climate change as a hoax. Now remember, you're in the United States Capitol now.[536.32][536.32](Laughter) Here is the tough question. Are you ready? Is President Donald Trump right?[543.29][543.29](Laughter)
I can say that 97% of scientists agree that climate change is real. It's primarily due to us, and scientists and engineers and many other folks have plenty of solutions who are ready to roll up our sleeves and fix this problem.
So you are suggesting that the President of the United States may not be right on his assertion?[569.83][569.83](Laughter) I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Let me start off with a question, and I want everybody to jump in. You worked on the recent Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change report. Can you give us the major takeaways from that report?
Absolutely. The main finding of the fourth National Climate Assessment is that this is, climate change is not some problem in the distant future. It is here, it is now, and it's happening in every part of the country. The other aspect of the report is that we already know that we have had wildfires, drought, and hurricanes in 2017 and 2018 that exceeded the cost of $1 billion per event, per disaster, and some far exceeded those costs. For example, by $90 billion, $50 billion and $125 billion for Hurricane Maria, Irma, and Harvey. So it's no surprise that in our chapter of the National Climate Assessment, we find that if carbon emissions continue unabated, that the U.S. could endure annual costs of over $100 billion in some sectors. However, if we did go on a low emissions pathway, we could reduce those damages to the U.S. by nearly half in the labor sector and by nearly 60% in the extreme heat mortality sector.
Well, look, first of all, many thanks for being here. You know, I had the privilege just before we came of getting to sit down with eight or nine of the people who survived the fires near Chico and Paradise and Megalia and those other towns there in Butte County. That's what's happened at one degree Celsius, global temperature rise. We're on path, even if people meet their Paris targets, for three or three and a half degrees of temperature rise. Talk a little bit about, I think sometimes people may not quite understand just how far into this saga we already are and how immediate the need for action is. This isn't something we can postpone a few more legislative sessions or presidential terms or something?
No. In fact, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change Special Report on 1.5 degrees Celsius rise above pre-industrial is in direct result of the Paris Climate Agreement because they said to the scientific community, "What does that mean? What would it take for us to do that?" As you say, the U.S., the world, we already have experienced 1 degrees Celsius, and we see in the headlines a lot of the climate-influenced extreme events. Now, if we continue on the current path, we would hurdle past 1.5 degrees Celsius rise above pre-industrial by the middle of this century, and we would get to 22 degrees Celsius by 2065 or 2060 around. In order to bend that global emissions curve, it's transformative change, and we really only have a critical decade to a dozen years to change things and invest in the infrastructure that you'll hear about later and the new policies and options that are out there to really reduce global emissions.
Can you come up with something to suck the carbon out of the air?
You bring up a good point. One of the most famous is a tree.[802.73][802.73](Laughter/Applause) As scientists and engineers, we have not done better than photosynthesis, and there's a lot of good blue carbon that's caught out there. You know, you go out there on our coastal waterways and we can see offshore the seagrass in many places around the world, mangroves, a lot of good carbon storage. However, what that special report tells us, that if we go past 1.5 degrees and we go to 2 degrees Celsius, that's a big difference in sea level rise, and that could overwhelm some of these natural, nature-based solutions. The seas would rise too fast for us to store that blue carbon. So, for example, the difference between 1.5-degree sea world and a 2-degree sea world would mean about four inches of sea level, and that would expose, it may not sound like much, 1.5 to 2 degrees, but in terms of people around the world, that report estimates you would expose 10 million more people to sea level rise influence consequences.
Shailene, do you want to jump in?
I would just comment on the point of nature healing nature, and I feel like that's a bit of the dialogue when we talk about climate change that isn't often present. And when you say, you know, "What can we do right now to work with nature and conserve nature that will prevent us from getting to that 1.5 degrees?", is that a part of the dialogue at all from your standpoint?
Absolutely. Nature-based solutions not only help store carbon, but often they help protect people and make them safer. The fact that wetlands in Louisiana used to be far offshore, and when storms and hurricanes would come, they would protect them, but now its sea level rise has eroded so much that now when Hurricane Katrina hits, it's so close and the storm surge is really devastating to Gulf Coast communities and many shoreline communities.
Let me ask you this. I mean, we're all familiar with the horror, the absolute horror that took place in California. We are aware of the acidification of the ocean, we're aware of rising sea levels, we're aware of the increase in extreme weather disturbances. If Donald Trump and the fossil fuel industry wins this debate, tell us what the planet looks like in 20 or 30 years.
So, we really start seeing things happen after about 2030, our choices, but what we do today is already potentially unleashing some very dire consequences in Antarctica. So, it may not happen right away, but if we go past certain thresholds, we may be unleashing a destabilization of the West Antarctic ice sheet, which could cause massive sea level rise. So we really want to hold that.
And what does the implications, you know, what does that massive sea level rise mean to coastal communities all over the world?
Most people live near the coast around the world, and that means many of our cultural heritage, terrorist sites, people would have to, many places would be inundated if that dire consequence happened.
It means communities where millions of people live will be underwater and not, and in terms of national security issues, it means mass migrations of people, does it not?
Lots of folks are looking at temporary migrations from extreme events. You think of a campfire, you think of a hurricane, you have a diaspora in-country, moving to other states, for example, in the United States, and between-country migrations. And they may be temporary, they may be long-term. These people are on the move, creatures are on the move, adapting to climate change. But it doesn't have to be that bad. If we really roll out solutions now, we get smart about adaptation, and we make sure it's equitable.
Bill?
Well, in some ways, I mean, this is as much a question for the rest of the panel or for you, Bernie. I mean, because I think you just got at something very important. The studies in the last couple of years have indicated that we can expect on current trajectories that we'll see 150, 200, 300 million climate migrants as the century goes on. Look at what's happened, you know, what the sort of spasm that it sent the politics of the Western world into to have a million people leave Syria and head out. I mean, what, how, we've got to be thinking about all kinds, not just, we have to be thinking about all kinds of things in big, new ways now.
Right. Okay, Van?
I do this for a living. I do this for a living. I swear. I know they're right in the microphone. Everything you just said kind of bums me out. So, what gives you personally hope? I mean, you're, I'm bummed out, I've just been here for like six minutes, and you had to do the whole report. What kept you going and what gives you hope?
A lot of gives me hope is many people are out there figuring out solutions in many different sectors. We need, all of us, we need, and what we also highlight in the report is that there's been a lot of initiative in the United States, over 455 cities have been making solutions to reduce and slow the pace of sea level rise. States, every single state in the United States has some sort of climate or energy-related policy. Most of them are transportation. You could go through the list of 30 different policies we highlight in the report. That gives us a lot of hope. And also, I know that scientists and engineers already have rolled out many solutions. We just don't, we're just lacking the political will to really deploy them. And what scientists are working on are much smarter, cheaper, distributed energy for the whole world, because we need global emissions reductions, and we need everyone around the world to have access out of, to new energy as well as in equitable ways.
Shailene, do you want to jump in? We're running out of time for the segment.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, from your standpoint, what can someone who's watching this at home right now do to help, you know, if they feel activated by this conversation and by the things that you've said, what can you offer them?
Sure. First thing is, is start looking at your own life and looking at what you can do in small ways, and share those stories with your friends. Secondly, absolutely ask your political leaders, business leaders, "What are you doing to help make our community more safe from the climate impacts that are affecting us and my neighbors? What are you doing to help reduce emissions globally?" You're gonna hear from some great folks in the upcoming panels about what they are doing. And share the stories. Every day, I try to reduce my emissions and figure out new ways, and stay abreast, keep abreast of the science, and share the success stories, because it's actually a more fun and interesting world. Lot of public health benefits from a lot of the renewable energy solutions, more forests, more carbon reservoirs. It's gonna be hard, but we're ready, and we have to get to work now.
Let me thank Dr. Equrezal for being here and point out that it was not only the Intergovernment Panel on Climate Change that issued a report. Recently, we had a report, it was the 13 agencies of the federal government. And all of these reports make a very simple and profound point, and that is, "The time is late." And as a planet, that means countries all over the world, not just the United States, not just Russia or China, countries all over the world are gonna have to stand up, take on the fossil fuel industry if we are all going to leave our kids and our grandchildren a planet that is habitable. This is a crisis situation. It is unprecedented, and we have got to act in an unprecedented way. Doctor, thank you so much. Bill.
Thank you for your leadership.[1309.33][1309.33](Applause)
One of the great sites of energy in the world.
This past December, Trump's administration opened our sacred lands to oil and gas development. 95% of the Arctic has already been open to oil. This is the last remaining 5%, and this is the heart of the Gwich'in people. Right now, we are on a sinking ship in Alaska. We have 33 coastal communities dealing with erosion. There's no ice to protect the land. When the water comes in, it would protect the land, but that's not there anymore. So it's eating Alaska, and there's 33 coastal communities that are dealing with this. There's two communities that do have to leave. They have to move their communities. We have ticks, something I didn't even know what ticks were. Our animals have sores on them, and we still live off of them, so it's scary and it's concerning. The seismic testing that they're doing, they are going to be bringing in 53 90,000-pound vehicles into our sacred land. These are where our animals live. They're not concerned about the impacts that it's gonna have on our animals or the Gwich'in way of life, and the indigenous people's rights are being violated. We're not asking for anything. We're not asking for jobs. We're not asking for schools. We're simply asking to continue to live off of the animals that provided for us for thousands of years. I want my children to have a healthy ecosystem. People don't understand that this is a crisis. This is a humanitarian crisis, and we need to start speaking up for our children.
Of all of the generations out there who are helping us to lead the fight against climate change, it is clear that it is the young people who are in the forefront. And we are delighted to welcome Shotez Khat Martinez, who currently serves as the Youth Director of Earth Guardians, a conservation organization dedicated to empowering young people. He is a grassroots activist who is rallying the American people to take a stand against the fossil fuel industry. Let me begin with a question, and that is, over the last 10 or so years, the fossil fuel industry has spent $1.7 billion, that's with a B, billion dollars on campaign contributions and lobbying expenditures. And I can tell you from firsthand knowledge, have been running all over this country, that in state after state where there are environmental initiatives on the ballot, the fossil fuel industry has been spending huge amounts of money trying to defeat those initiatives. Further, the vast majority of members of Congress, in fact, take contributions from the fossil fuel industry, and one of the leading families in this country, one of the wealthiest families in this country are the Koch Brothers, who spend many hundreds of millions of dollars trying to elect right-wing candidates, anti-climate change candidates, have made their fortune primarily through the fossil fuel industry. So my question to you is a pretty simple one. Given the enormous power of the oil, gas, and coal industry, how can the American people stand up to these powerful special interests and do what has to be done for our planet?
Grateful to be here. Thank you for having me. Appreciate everybody on the panel. As you made it very clear, that the fossil fuel industry is not only contaminating our water, polluting our air, making our communities sick, but it is polluting our politics, and it has been for a very long time. And when I was a little kid, growing up, I continued to see that less, growing up in Colorado, where we experienced a lot of impacts from natural gas extraction, where members of our community are getting sick, where it's contaminating our water, where friends and family members of mine are now being put in greater and greater peril due to the expanding of this industry. This issue is less and less about, you know, red or blue, because we see in our state where progressive Democrat politicians are claiming to be representatives of our future, of our people, claiming to care about climate change, claiming to care about clean jobs when they're taking massive campaign contributions from the natural gas and the oil corporations. For me, it's been very clear that this isn't about, you know, the left or right wing. This is about politicians to stand up and represent the best interests of our community, of our people, and those that are gonna be backed by the fossil fuel corporations. And I think one thing that we've seen is that historically, it has been politically risky to stand up to the fossil fuel powers as politicians. And I think that my generation is very different, that young people in the world today have a different understanding and perspective on the world, because yes, we are the future, and yes, we are at most at stake because of what is yet to come, but we are also here now. And I think that gives us a perspective of pushing the agenda so that it is politically risky to not stand up to the fossil fuel powers.
Well, that's exactly where I wanted to start off with. What are you seeing? You get around the country. What kind of activities are you seeing your generation getting involved in that older generations are not?
Definitely. I think one thing to make, that I've seen very clearly is that our generation is more connected than any generation in the past has ever been, and that's for various reasons, right? Social media and information and technology that connects us as a global community, but also because of things like pipelines that are connecting communities in the tar sands in Alberta to communities in rural Nebraska. And you see that throughout the fights and the Keystone XL Pipeline, the Cowboy and Indian Alliance was an example of people from very, very different perspectives, different communities, different ways of life, different belief systems, were connected by a threat to their way of life, to a threat to their water. So continuing to look at issues like Standing Rock, when you see the connectivity and the people that it inspired and brought together from walks of life all over the place, like this is something that is unifying us as a national community, as a global community, that people are beginning to recognize that this is bigger than any one of us, because this is bigger than politics, this is bigger than the environment, this is bigger than just rising sea levels, this is about our way of life. You know, as you saw in the video that was just played, as you hear in the news frequently, like this is about people, this is about humans, this is about the fact that our generation, my generation, my little brother, my little sister, their future is threatened by a crisis that politicians have spent too much time, you know, separating it and making it a bipartisan issue, excuse me, partisan issue, and really tainting, I think, what needs to be a unifying space. And I think climate change has the opportunity to bring people together from a space of hope and a space of opportunity and a space of solutions. That is, I think, what is gonna connect and unite all people, because when we look at these fights, it's not just to protect clean water and to end these pipelines, but we see communities all over the place that need clean jobs, that need jobs that can really support an economy that is gonna be thriving, you know, and that's, I think, the place where we can come together on this issue, is building economic prosperity, is building a healthy, safe, sustainable planet for the next generation.
Bill, did you want to jump in? Or Van?
I was gonna say something similar to what you just said, Bernie, but I do feel that, you know, past paradigms surrounding climate change, there's a lot of fear involved, and people tend to retreat when they hear about it, or "I'll just go live over here by myself and protect my family or make sure my community's safe", but we don't really have the luxury to do that anymore. But we don't really have the luxury to do that anymore. It really is a community, you have to be involved with your community. So is there anything that you've noticed with our generation and the generations that are to come and the people who are still here? That sounds so funny. Sorry, I didn't mean it like that. Every generation on the planet, you know, how people are working together in a new way because of this new sense of connectivity?
I think, I think narrative and the story that inspires people the most is when we communicate well, that this has to come from a place of love. And I think that that is something that people all across the board can connect and can relate to because for me, when I, when I, when I think about why I've spent the last 12 years of my life, you know, I'm 18 and I started getting up onto a stage when I was six years old to talk about these issues. And, you know, when I think about the sacrifice and the time and the energy, it's, it's not about a crisis or about an issue or a problem, it's about, you know, the moments and the magic and the places I've been and the culture and the music and the food and like everything beautiful about, about human existence, right? Those beautiful things, the memories, like the small things, right? And that is, is what we are fighting to defend. That is what is worth fighting to defend. That is worth setting aside, what we disagree about, setting aside what separates us and what divides us, setting aside these, these different things in our system and our society that separate people. And that place of love and that place of understanding that this is the most important issue of our time because it connects every other issue. You know, if you, if you care about gender equality, you know, some of the most recent studies, including Paul Hawken in The Drawdown, was talking about how one of the best ways to address our climate crisis was to educate women and advocate for their reproductive rights. That's a direct line of intersection between these two movements because climate change is that thing, is that umbrella crisis, that it is, it is more than what we, we have ever successfully communicated it to be.
Let me speak to the older people here. All right? Let me see how you communicate with these.
All right, let's see.
Okay. Bill?
Well, I, you know, I completely get fear and hope and love, all those good things. But I think sometimes I channel my, my inner Bernie and just get pissed off too. To go back to the question, I mean, you just lived through this thing in Colorado where the oil industry literally outspent community activists 40 to 1 in a successful effort to beat a bill, not that would have banned fracking, would merely have banned it in people's front yards and schoolyards and things. Forty to 1, they spent $40 million. One of the things that the Sunrise Movement has done so well is tell, try to get politicians on the hook. Are you going to take money from the fossil fuel industry or are you not? Do you think, I mean, next time an election comes around, do you think this is an issue that moves young people? Do you think if they look at two politicians and one of them has some money that came in from Exxon and the other doesn't, that that's going to make a real difference in how people vote?
I definitely think, I definitely think that what we can see is that exciting and inspiring and speaking to the younger generation is going to be something that politicians are going to need to learn how to do better and better every election cycle. And I think that young people feel disenfranchised and disconnected from politics often because they feel like their, their voices aren't represented and aren't heard by politicians. And I think that, you know, different people that are representing in, in politics, like Alexandria Ocasio, who's, who's about to come up and, and, you know, just tear up the mic, I'm excited, I'm excited to be witness to it. You know, is that there's this level of relatability and connectivity that we see there. And I think part of that is, yes, we love politicians that, that speak to us, but at the same time, there's that accountability method, that measure that needs to be held for, for all politicians, regardless of how good their, their game is, you know, we have to hold them accountable. And I think that this, this pledge to not take money from fossil fuels is huge because my community, you know, we have, we, you know, former Governor Hickenlooper, he claims to drink fracking fluid, he sued municipalities that tried to take local efforts and measures to ban fracking. We were outspent, as you said, by the fossil fuel industry, you know, 40 to 1. And this is a continuous cycle where people are, are, are fighting, people are on the grounds. You know, we see indigenous pipeline movements across the nation from Line 3 to Bayou Bridge that people are standing up and fighting back. And so we need that political willpower, as was stated previously in the evening, like that political willpower. And that's, I think, a place in which people and the constituents and the voters, especially the young ones, I think are going to play a significant role in holding every politician that comes into office from here on out accountable.
You said you're 18?
I just voted, first time.
Just first time voter? First time voter? You know, I've, I've known you since you were in single digits. And it's just unbelievable to watch you become who you're becoming. The one thing about you that I've always marveled at is that you talk about politics, but that's really not your thing. You've always been an artist. And I think that we're in a time when, you know, the politicians and the business leaders and the military, like the military can't keep us safe from climate change. The politicians can't pass a bill. The business, most business models eat up jobs, give jobs to robots, not people, hurt the planet. So the people who we usually look to, you know, in normal times, politicians, business leaders, generals, they're, they're, they can't help. And it seems to me that the help is going to come from unlikely places. Artists, mystics, you know, strange people like these people. But you're an artist, man. And I just wondered before you go if you would just bless us with some bars.
Y'all down? Bernie, you down? All right. Throughout history, I think that the great artists that have represented the, the times have been the ones that have been champions of the people, from Bob Marley to Tupac to John Lennon, you know? So we've paved the way. I mean, our generation of artists, like, we're bringing out fire as well. So I'd love to share. I'm a hip hop artist, I'm an MC as well. And, you know, I'll share a little something. We taking back the power, bring it to the people. We stand for justice, fight for freedom till we treat it equal. This is our time. We build a legacy and leave it and y'all can't say my name, but you know it's me when you see it. I am indigenous, product of genocide. Colonization stole my past, but I refuse to hide. Never alone, though we hungry like a pack of wolves, hollering after moon, indigo is running through the woods. Tired of bureaucracy, sick of broken democracy. Stories of the end fulfilling sinister prophecies, we overthrowing kingdoms, ready to break free from leaders that lead with barrels of oil that be leaking and leaderships a beacon. We leading ships to freedom. State of emergency, wake up people that be sleeping, we strike a match, light a flame, you could set the world afire. I can see it in your eyes, born to be a freedom fighter, born to be bigger than the cities that you coming from, born to be stronger than the shadows that we running from. Overcome, overstand, stand up, hands up, don't shoot, parachute, crash land, close up. Indigo warriors, visionary artists. It's time to take this power back and finish what we started because nothing they can do will stop the waves that we been making. This the roots of revolution, it's the power that we taking. Thank you.
I think I can say without fear of being wrong here that this was a unique presentation in the halls of the United States Senate. Thank you so much for being with us.
My name is Marcella. I'm 21 years old and I was born and raised in South Florida. Growing up, dealing with hurricanes was a regular occurrence for me and my family. I remember being really little and feeling afraid because sometimes my dad would have to work during the storm. But it wasn't until my family moved to Fort Lauderdale, Florida, that I really became closely acquainted with the devastating impacts of sea level rise. We moved somewhere that's sometimes called the Venice of America and it's well-known for its beautiful waterways and coast. My family was lucky enough to live just one block away from the beach. When we moved, I started to notice that every time a storm would hit, the street in front of my apartment would flood. And sometimes it would flood even when it wasn't raining. Local businesses would have to put out sandbags to stop the water from coming into the shores. My parents would have to move the cars up to higher ground for parking. And it was this weird dystopia where regular people were being forced to become experts in the ocean's tidal patterns and sea level rise. On really bad days, the entrance to my apartment building would be blocked off from flooding. At the time, I didn't know that any of this had to do with something called global climate change or sea level rise. I just knew that this was an everyday part of my family's life. Then I went to college and I learned that my personal experiences with flooding and with hurricanes were just warning signs of more drastic changes to come for Florida and for the rest of the world. Scientists predict that by the end of the century, South Florida and Fort Lauderdale could see up to six to seven feet of flooding. And that would put one out of every eight homes in Florida underwater. I love way more than eight people in South Florida. And no one should have to live in fear of losing their families or their homes to rising seas. And that's why I'm fighting to stop climate change and create millions of good paying jobs in the process.
Our next guest is someone who I suspect does not need much of an introduction. Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez. Is the Congresswoman-elect from New York's 14th Congressional District. She is a bold progressive, fighting for a Green New Deal and for other legislation, not only in terms of the environment, but in all areas. They're going to protect ordinary people against the greed of big money. So Alexandria, we're delighted that you're joining us this evening. Let me start off with a pretty simple question. We have heard over and over again from the Trump administration and from fossil fuel economists that if we transform our energy system away from fossil fuel and we come, become more energy efficient and we move to wind and solar and other sustainable energy, what they are telling us is going to be a disaster for the economy. Is President Trump right? That's a hard one. I want you to think about it before you respond. Or is there, in fact, ideas out there that would enable us to create millions of good paying jobs as we move away from fossil fuels?
It's, it's unsurprising that the response to any bold proposal that we have is to incite fear, to incite fear of loss, to incite fear of others, to incite fear of our future. But the only way we are going to get out of this situation is by choosing to be courageous. That's the only way we're going to get out of this. And first of all, it's just plain wrong. The idea that we're going to somehow lose economic activity, as a matter of fact, it's not just possible that we will create jobs and economic activity by, by transitioning to renewable energy, but it's inevitable that we are going to create jobs, it's inevitable that we're going to create industry, and it's inevitable that we can use the transition to 100% renewable energy as the vehicle to truly deliver and establish economic, social, and racial justice in the United States of America. That is our proposal and that is what we are here to do because in the depths of darkness, in the depths of despair, which what we last saw, you know, when we think about where we were when the New Deal was established, we were a nation in depression, in Great Depression, we were a nation on the brink of war. We saw the rise of fascism creeping across in, in, in Europe. And no one would thought that a nation so poor, so scarce, and so, in such dire straits as we were in that time, could pursue such a bold economic agenda. But we chose to do it anyway. We had the courage to do it anyway. And that is what this moment demands of us right now. That's what we have to do. We have to, this is going to be the great society, the moonshot, the civil rights movement of our generation. That is the scale, that is the scale of the ambition that this movement is going to require.
How do we, you know, I think what we all understand is that we're fighting for the future of the planet. But what Alexandria is talking about is that not only can we effectively combat climate change, but in the process, we can do good economics and create millions of good paying jobs here and throughout the world. Alexandria, go into some detail.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's important to, to also talk about the fact that this is not just an economic solution, is that this is how we, this is the, the mechanism through which we can really deliver justice to communities that have been underserved. The water in Flint is still dirty. The water in Flint is still dirty. We've got children, Van and I were talking earlier, we've got children that are, that are choking on the smoke in California, those same, they're, they're same children and rather children mirrored of those children in Puerto Rico are choking on the fungal spores because we have not recuperated from the crisis. And the mold from the floods is, is taking up all of these people's homes. We have injustices in this country. Those injustices are concentrated in frontline communities, in indigenous, black and brown communities. They are the ones that experience the greatest depths of this injustice. But if we chose and if we had the moral, political, and economic courage to say, we're going to fix all the pipes in Flint, we would put a lot of people to work on, at that, at the same time. And that is what this is about.
Van should ask the first question here because Van literally wrote the book 10 years ago on the kind of green collar economy and green jobs.
Van?
Well, first of all, I just, it just brings tears to your eyes to hear you. It's just unbelievable. And, you know, Bill and Bernie, myself and a bunch of other people here, we, we tried to take this hill in 2008. A big part of Obama's agenda was essentially the Green New Deal. I had a job in the White House to try to implement it. Right wing came after me, I had to resign under fire. Then they came after Bill and we couldn't get it done. But I think you're going to get it done. And...
We're going to get it done. We're going to get it done.
So rather than talk about my book, The Green Collar Economy, I have a two-part question. One is about you and the other is about your generation. Where'd you come from? Why did you run for office? You told me that, that you went to a protest and as a result, something happened. Can you just talk about that?
Yeah, I first started considering running from, running for Congress, running from Congress. I know a lot of people want to run from Congress. I first started thinking about running for Congress, actually at Standing Rock in North Dakota and South Dakota. And it was really from that crucible of activism where I saw people putting their lives on the line and native peoples putting everything they had on the line, not just for themselves, not just so that this country can honor the treaties that we have made, but for the entire water supply for the Midwest United States, that they're putting everything on the line for others, for people that they have never met and never known. But they, but they did know that children were out there drinking that water, going to drink that water. And when I saw that, I knew that I had to do something more. And, you know, it wasn't even planned to be this way, but it's, I guess it's a kind of a, a poetry of history of sorts that that's where I started. And then the very first week, Sunrise, young people at Sunrise came up and asked me to join them in protest and to take that protest to the halls of Congress. And it's, it's what needs to be done in this moment.
Well, you know, the fact that you start as a protester and then you run for office, against all odds, you win, and then join the rest of young people, you're still protesting even while you're in power. I think that idea of being both a movement leader and a politician, which I think Bernie Sanders is probably the best example of, is something I think is important. The other thing I think about your politics that's interesting is you, your generation uses the term intersectionality, which I had to look up, but it's, I think, we used to call it the Rainbow Coalition back in the 80s and 90s, but you guys have taken it to a different level. Can you just talk about, we had a slogan 10 years ago, "Green jobs, not jails." That we saw criminal justice and economic justice and environmental justice as one fight, that those kids standing on street corners, we don't have, you know, disposable resources, we don't have disposable species, we don't have disposable children or neighborhoods either. It's all precious and that those kids could be putting up those solo panels like, like Bernie was saying and, and making a positive difference. Can you just speak to the intersectional power of your Green New Deal?
Yeah, it's really the, the core of that is leave no person behind. We cannot have a solution, we cannot move forward into our future unless every single American is considered part of that. And whenever we see oversights, you know, oftentimes when we get to the negotiating table in laws and, and policymaking, there's this idea that, oh, we can leave the poorest of the poor behind. the poor behind, or we don't have to worry about this tiny sliver of the population because they're just a tiny sliver of the population. And what that eventually does is that it creates a crack. And that crack, really, if you think of there being like a crack in the dam, it's usually where things always break down. And when we create policy the right way with integrity that honors everybody from the most vulnerable to the most powerful, when we acknowledge and see every person in this country, which is really what it's about, is that we have chosen not to see people in this country. We have chosen not to see people in this country until the majority of us have become unseen economically. Working people are not seen in the halls of Congress. Working people are not seen in policymaking until we realize that the majority of Americans are working or working poor. And we are not seen.
Let me jump to the question. Shailene and Bill comment. You use the word, which I absolutely agree with, is that millions of people out there are suffering, they're in pain. Turn on the TV, they're not seen. Your observations on how media covers the pain that working people feel?
I mean, I think it's, it's through that negligence in how we cover working people. We think of, you look at this idea, I mean, I think it's funny and I think it's been this, this kind of interesting puzzle in how media and especially, you know, right wing media, but all media sometimes even treats me, because in our journey, I am a working person that won a seat against all odds. We were outspent $4 million and I had $300,000 in the bank, all in small dollar contributions. And we won anyway. And people didn't know what to say. People didn't know how to react. They say, oh, she was just a bartender. Never mind the fact that I had experience in policymaking, that I was an educational organizer. It's the idea that the amount of money you make for a living actually equals your worth in society.
But can we interrupt this program?
Sorry.
And make an announcement about your shoes?
Yes, yes.
I think we need at least a half hour discussion.
Right.
About your shoes. Just kidding.
And the same day as this, but it's a funny note, but the exact same day as the Trump administration's climate report, which they tried to bury, which they tried to air a month early, the day after Thanksgiving, that same day, they spent in prime time talking about my shoes. And that is what I talk about when I say being unseen, is that they won't even bring it up. They don't bring up the percentage of Americans that make less than $40,000 or $50,000 a year. They don't bring up the fact that we have amassed some of the largest amounts of wealth in American history, but we have never seen so many people struggling and living paycheck to paycheck in the way that we are today.
Okay, Bill, Shailene?
Just to bring it back to jobs and opportunity, I, you know, people who are currently working in coal mines or people who are currently working in jobs that are, we talk about replacing or offering new opportunity. I have a family member who's a coal miner and he isn't against the reality of climate change, he isn't against renewables, but it's more, how am I supposed to feed myself as this transition happens? How do you, how do you speak on that?
Great question. Very important question.
Because there's so much fear in that.
Yes. And for folks who are interested in learning more about this whole movement, I suggest when we talk about transition, we talk about just transitions. Transitions to renewable energy that also provide justice to all communities that are impacted, whether they are people that need to leave their homes on the shores of Puerto Rico, whether they are coal miners that feel like they may be transitioned out of a job, we need to have a just transition. That includes fully funding the pensions that all of these coal miners are due, of which they are being stripped. That means that we need to, we need to truly provide for those that are younger in their careers, truly provide educational opportunities in order for them to transition to renewable energy jobs as well. And, you know, right, right there, you know, there's an amazing environmental activist out in West Virginia, her name's Paula Jean Swearingen, she actually ran for Senate this year. And she says, if another country came in and bombed our mountains and poisoned our water, we would go to war. And we cannot allow that level of disrespect of our people and of our land to continue. And again, when it comes to the economics of it, we can put so many people to work. We need to refit so many pipes. We need to relay roads. We need to rebuild schools. We need to, we need to invent technology that's never even been invented yet. There is no shortage of work to do, but we need to decide to do it. We need to say, we're going to do it.
Bill?
Well, first of all, just thank you so much. You've done the thing that politicians at their very best do, which is seize a moment when it appears. And the sight of you joining the Sunrise Movement, young people, in the Speaker's office to say, "Time for change," was a galvanizing moment. It took this fall, when we've had these, one disaster after another and one huge report after another, and made them politically real in a sense, and so such gratitude. As we go forward with this Green New Deal, as I understand it, I wanted to sort of just ask you sort of a little bit about the mechanics of things going forward. As I understand it, the plan is to have a committee and then take till 2020 to sort of figure out with a lot of input where we're going. And so, over the last 10 or 12 years, movement, climate movements learned a lot of lessons about climate justice. In the Midwest, people have learned about how important stopping eminent domain for private gain would be. Across North America, we've learned how important tribal sovereignty is to these fights. Over and over and over, we've learned that a key lesson is not just to say, we're going to do green jobs, it's going to say, we have to stop new fossil fuel infrastructure because if we keep digging the hole deeper at the same time that we're digging out of it, we never get out of it. So how, what's the sort of mechanism in your mind over the next couple of years for people to take those lessons and those concerns and help make them into this policy that maybe after the 2020 elections, we'll be able to really do something with?
Absolutely. Well, the good news is that we're not starting from scratch. There are so many people like Van, like Senator Merkley, who had established a select committee when he was in the House, a previous select committee. There's a lot of legislation that has been drafted to already start addressing some of these smaller issues, just transitions in coal, whether it's, you know, whether it's our energy infrastructure, whether it's battery, when we're looking at battery grids and so on. There's a lot of work that has already been done, but it needs to be consolidated and brought under the tent of a Green New Deal. And when we try to solve this issue piecemeal, we are not going to get it solved in time. That's why we are asking for this really great, ambitious, singular plan. And that is why, you know, I believe that the progressive movement is the only movement that has answers right now. We're the only ones that are drawing from the lessons of history, from Franklin Delano Roosevelt, from some of the most ambitious projects that we have pursued in, in American history. And that truly, again, is the scale that it's going to take. So, you know, I think that there's so much work that has been done and there's some outlined questions, especially when it comes to investment in technologies. When we as a public choose to invest in private, when we as a public choose to invest in new technologies, we deserve a return on that investment. And for far too long, we gave money to Tesla, we gave money to a ton of people, and we got no return on our investment that the public made in creating technologies. And it's about time that we get our due, because it's the public that funded and financed a lot of innovative technologies. And that's another, you know, thing to go.
Let me just jump in and thanks so much for being with us. In the next few weeks and months, very important decisions are going to be made in the House and the Senate. The truth of the matter is that the American people, in my view, understand the moral imperative of combating climate change for our kids and grandchildren, and they increasingly understand that we can create millions of jobs as we do that. So I would hope that everybody was heard, Alexandria, tonight. She can't do it alone, the other good people in the House can't do it alone. We need millions of people to stand up and tell the Congress, hey, stop worrying about the fossil fuel industry, stop worrying about our kids and our grandchildren. Alexandria, thanks so much.
I've seen a lot of hurricanes. But not like Maria.
Tens of thousands of homes have been damaged or completely destroyed, kids are not in schools. You have no electricity.
All the world scientists agree what happened. They all agree that the storms are worse because of climate change.
The people, they feel forgotten. They needed the government and it's a sense of, they don't care about us.
Yeah, I think Puerto Rico, I think we did a fantastic job in Puerto Rico.
What is there to be proud of? 2,175 dead?
Especially with climate change, we have to be honest and understand that the world today is not where it was 50 years ago or 30 years.
We're going to push for a switch to clean energy sources and we have plenty of sun.
Does it make any sense to simply rebuild the system the way it was? And it's necessary for the island to take advantage of two of its great natural resources, that is the sun, this is Isla del Sol, take advantage of that and take advantage of wind and sustainable energy.
And now, I am very proud to tell everybody how bipartisan we are. Our next guest is a card-carrying member of the Republican Party. And he is Mayor Dale Ross of Georgetown, Texas, a community of some 70,000 residents. And Mayor Ross has rightfully achieved a great deal of national attention because he successfully, in his municipally-owned utility, electric utility, transitioned his city to 100% renewable And I think one of the points we want to make tonight, and Mayor Ross will speak to it, is obviously, the main issue is saving the planet, nothing more important than that. But we are also talking about the ability to create millions of jobs. And in my view, and I think Mayor Ross will talk to this, over a period of time, we have the capability of lowering utility costs in America. All over this country, people every month, they get their utility bill and they pull their hair out, all right? Sick and tired of rising utility costs. And I think we have the opportunity, as we transition away from fossil fuel, to stabilize and lower that. Mayor Ross, thank you so much for you and your wife, Miki, to be here with us tonight. So let me ask you this question. Your city, as I understand it, now has 100% renewable energy sources.
That's true.
And I would imagine that having moved away from fossil fuel, the electric bills in your community are soaring and everyone is beating down the halls of City Hall in order to get you to go back to fossil fuels. Am I right?
You are absolutely wrong.
Oh, okay. Glad to hear that.
No, the critics, I would hope that that's the case, but that's not what we did. We made our decision based on the facts. We went based on where the facts would be. And so what we wanted to do is achieve two things. One, we wanted to eliminate volatility in the short-term markets. Two, we wanted to have an electricity source that we could mitigate regulatory and governmental risk. And so when you have wind and solar, which are renewables and it's clean energy, there's not a whole lot that the federal government can screw up for you or the state government because there's not a whole lot to regulate. And what we were able to do is we were able to sign contracts for 20 and 25 years that our kilowatt per hour price does not increase over the terms of the 20 and 25-year contract. So if you assume normal inflation at 1.5% to 2%, what are we going to be looking at in 10 years? I think our rates will be considerably lower than those in surrounding communities.
All right. So, so listen up, listen up, America. You may believe in climate change, you may not, but what this Republican mayor is telling you is if you want affordable electric bills, think hard about moving to sustainable energy. Okay, who wants to start it off? Van?
Well, first of all, it's only recently that people would be shocked to hearing this coming from a Republican. You know, there's a guy that ran for president in 2008. He said climate change is real, caused by humans, cap and trade would fix it, it'd create millions of jobs. I miss that guy every day. His name's John McCain. John McCain ran as a climate champion and a climate hawk in your party just 10 years ago. It's the only thing that Obama and McCain never fought about because they both agreed. I wonder, for you now, looking at the party, what are the best arguments that you are finding to bring your Republican sisters and brothers around? Because I'm tired of us just having a food fight about it. We're on Titanic going down and we're just having a food fight. What arguments work for this new Republican Party?
Yeah, I think the best argument is you have to be a fact-based decision-maker. And so I trust the scientists in their field that can land a Mars rover 300 million miles from here versus somebody that really doesn't have any education or expertise in climate change. Now, when we, you know, I think you leave it to the subject matter experts, okay? And I think if you're going to run for office, you need to make that argument, that not only is renewable energy good economically, it's good for environment as well. Because I've always said, if you win the economic argument, you're going to win the environmental argument by default. And, you know, I think the greatest hope is when you look out here and you see this audience and you see these young people, this is the future that I see. And with their help, we can get folks elected to office that knows that there can be both environmental benefits and economic benefits to going renewable energy. And I think you'll see, the tide is changing. And let me tell you why the tide is changing. We are at a tipping point right now where it's all about cost. And coal cannot compete with wind and solar on cost. And no matter who says, we're going to bring coal jobs back, if you hear that, that's absolutely not true because they're not going to be able to compete in the market. And it's an open market. And so what we're looking at is we're looking at the tremendous job creation in wind and solar and renewables, because you've got three kinds of renewables. You've got wind, solar, and hydro. Hydro's out in Washington State, Oregon State, okay? And so if you look at Texas, we're number one in wind and we're number five in solar and we'll probably be number one in solar in a couple of years as well. Our solar farm is pretty cool. It's a two-mile array and it tracks the sun in the morning. So as the sun rotates, the array is so that you can maximize the energy you're producing. Now let me tell you what, it takes three people to run, that was 1.7 billion solar panels on 1,250 acres. But up in Amarillo, where our wind farm is, there's 97 turbines. And those guys do maintenance day one, and it takes them 30 days to get to turbine number 97. And the vast majority of the folks up there on that wind farm, they were in the oil patch. And they like this, it's better pay, it's cleaner work. And like a guy told me, he says, hey, I'm 35, I'm going to retire as a technician out here because I really like my work and it's going to be there, I think, forever.
Have you found that you've had many conversations with various politicians across the country and other cities as well, using you as an example and asking questions on how they can emulate what you've created?
Yeah, there's a city north of Dallas called Denton. And they're going to be, we're the first city in the state of Texas to be 100% renewable, currently the largest in the country. They're going to be the second in the state of Texas. And our folks in our utility have been working with them. And they understand the economics and they understand the long-term certainty. And they're going to go down that path just like we have. And I will say this, and Van and I were out in Hollywood, yeah, I'm in Hollywood, yeah. They danced in four movies last year, okay? Gore, Redford, Ross, you know, you hear all that and so.
Shailene, now you've got some competition. You didn't know that.
I'm just saying. But we were out there and we gave a presentation. And I get back and I get back to Georgetown, and this is where there's green and green energy on the economic development side. I get a phone call from a billionaire who saw our presentation. And he says, I need to meet with you, because he believes in rewarding cities that have really good environmental policies. And he's authorized me to spend up to $50 million in your city. And so I'm not going to name his name because we're currently figuring out a way to spend his $50 million. If we get in a bind, we're going to ask my wife, Miki, how If we get in a bind, we're going to ask my wife Miki how to spend $50 million. And we will have that figured out in, what, two weeks, I'm guessing. And so not only is it the right thing to do, it's economically the right thing to do and it's the future. Because, you know, you get into the moral and ethical discussion right now, and don't we have an obligation to leave the planet better for our kids and grandkids and great-grandkids? And we have the ability to do that. You just have to have bold visionary leaders who you elect to make that happen with y'all's help.
One of the themes of this night has been this kind of generational transformation. And one of the things that mayors have to think about is, you know, what their city will be like 10, 20, 30, 40 years down the road. Do you find that the fact that you've turned this into a clean city is an attraction for people, young people, moving to your area, bringing new businesses, that kind of thing?
I don't know if exclusively that's it, but it's part of it. And it certainly helps. But, you know, most of the folks, they're looking for, you know, good schools, safe city, and we offer that. I mean, we've been one of the, in the last four years, we're second, first, fourth, and now sixth fastest-growing city in the United States for cities between 50 and 100,000. And this is just one element. Now, the younger folks think it's pretty cool because we are innovative and progressive. Although it is in Texas, and the state and the county and my city, they're a little red, Mr. Sanders, just a little red.
We're working on that.
I know, I understand. But see, this just proves Republicans can do environmentally friendly things as well as Democrats, okay? But I think the whole key to our city is because we don't really base our decisions based on partisan politics. We base them based on the facts and what's good for the citizens we were elected to serve.
Let me ask you, just picking up on a point that Bill made. If I'm a businessperson looking for a place to relocate, and I talk to the mayor, then you tell me my electric bills are not going to go up for the next 20 years, it sounds to me like that's a pretty good inducement for me to come to your community.
Absolutely, especially if you happen to be, if you are a data center. Because typically, the way the incentives work in cities is you can abate sales tax or real estate taxes. We have the third component, which is we can negotiate a downward price. If you add a data center and you're going to be using an enormous amount of electricity, because this is a huge benefit owning your own utility company. I mean, what we do is we transfer four to five million dollars, sort of like a de facto excise tax. Over the last 10 years, we've transferred over $45 million from the enterprise fund to the general fund. General fund pays for police, fire, libraries, roads, parks, wrecks, that kind of style.
Let me ask you this political question, if you like. How do the people in the community feel about the fact that you're 100% sustainable and you're going to be flatlining your electric rates for the next 20 years?
Yeah, initially, it was a little bit of a challenge because we had to do a lot of explaining. I gave a lot of speeches. We, our Public Relations Department was out in the community, given, and on our website. Initially, there was a little resistance, but it's too good to be true, right? So it was too good to be true, though there are those doubting Thomases out there. And I just said, well, let's just take a look at it for a year and you tell me if your utility bill goes up or not. And then let's take a look at it in the second year and tell me if you... And so through education and through giving a bunch of speeches, not only me, but other folks in this city, people have supported it. And now that we've got not only national attention, but international attention all across the globe, people take a sense of pride in it. You know, we still have that little segment that's not really happy about it because, you know, this is some kind of partisan liberal democratic left-wing conspiracy policy of some sort. I don't know what the conspiracy is, but we're doing it for the wrong reasons, okay?
But you didn't tell the people what city was the first in America?
Oh, you know what?
You forgot to tell them!
Oh, let me tell you what. There is this senator, okay, whose last name happens to be Sanders. He's in my speeches because I always play trivia with the audience. Okay, who was the first city in the United States to be 100% renewable? And then I'll say, well, they were from Burlington, Vermont. And then I'm going, okay, who was the mayor at that time? And I'm coming, he's currently a senator. Oh, Senator Sanders! But that was tremendous. Because, you know, the fact of the matter is this, really, the cities and the counties are the ones that are tasked with providing electricity and utilities to their citizens. At the state level and federal level, not so much, okay? Now, the federal level can help, and I'll tell you what's coming up in Congress in 2020. The renewable energy credits expire in 2020. But you notice the fossil fuel credits do not expire in 2020. You notice that the fossil fuel is a mature industry that doesn't need to boost up. The renewable energy is still a little bit on the young side. If any industry needs, and I'll make this deal, okay, do away with the renewable credits, but do away from the fossil fuels. Let's have a level playing field and see who wins.
Other questions?
You know, I'm from Tennessee, you're from Texas, so I grew up in a red state. I noticed your wife has that beautiful cross. You mentioned doubting Thomas. Is there a spiritual dimension to this? Is there, you talked about politics, you talked about economics, but I get the suspicion that it may be deeper than that for you. And I just wonder if you'd speak to that?
I think it is. I mean, I think we have a duty and obligation to leave the world better than we found it, okay? And I think if you look in the Bible, there's all kinds of points made about being a servant and having a servant's heart. And if I can just change the world just this much before, hopefully, I go northbound, then I think it will be a life well-lived. And I think that's what we can expect. And hopefully, when I'm dead and gone, the poets will write poems and the songs, just people in Georgetown will be singing songs and odes about me when I'm gone, or maybe just put a little statue somewhere. But in all seriousness, it's all about leaving something better than you found it. And I think we're on the path in Georgetown to making that happen.
All right. Mayor Dale Ross, thank you so much.
The globe faces an unprecedented crisis. The United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change has informed us that we have 12 short years to bring this entire planet together, to make a massive transformation of our energy system and global economy, and only 30 years to completely eliminate carbon pollution emissions. Critics will say that this is unrealistic, but it's actually already happening all over the world. While no country on Earth is where we need to be, there are countries who are moving in the right direction to take immediate and aggressive action to combat climate change. China certainly has significant political and environmental problems, but it has already installed a little bit more than double the total amount of solar as the United States and recently became the biggest solar country in the world. China raised its 2020 solar target to five times the total amount of electricity that the United States produces from all sources. China has achieved this explosive growth by employing the largest renewable energy workforce in the world, 4.2 million people, which is nearly 40% of the total number of renewable workers in the world. And it's not just China. The European Union released a plan to eliminate carbon emissions by 2050. One of the European Union's member states, Sweden, has released a plan to stop using fossil fuels altogether by 2030 and eradicate all carbon pollution emissions by 2050. France is investing over $9 billion per year to triple its onshore wind power capacity and multiply its solar power generation five-fold by 2030. In 2017, Brazil and India joined China to account for 63% of the world's renewable energy investments, around $143 billion. India is now producing the cheapest electricity in the world through solar and wind plants. This is a pivotal moment for the United States. We cannot continue to abandon our fellow humans all over the globe. We must lead the fight to cut carbon pollution emissions and create millions of jobs.
It goes without saying that the climate crisis is not an American issue, it's not a Chinese issue, it's not a Russian issue. This is an issue that is going to impact every country on the planet. And it is absolutely imperative that we figure out ways to bring the world together, maybe instead of fighting wars against each other, but in a sense, to stand together to combat climate change. Our last panelist of the evening is Dr. Camilla Bausch, who is the director of the Ecologik Institute in Berlin, Germany. We thank you so much for coming over. She has been a longstanding part of the German delegation to the UN climate negotiations, and she has been monitoring some of the innovative breakthroughs in sustainable energy that have been taking place all over the globe. Dr. Bausch, clearly, there are some bright spots in terms of breakthroughs in sustainable energy. We're producing energy in many parts of the world that are far less expensive, that was previously the case. We're creating jobs in doing that. Can you talk a little bit about some of the breakthroughs that we are seeing and some of the really innovative things that countries around the world are doing?
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. It's a pleasure to be here and join this wonderful panel. And of course, I had to come over from Germany, meaning I flew. And flying to an event which is on a climate crisis, I had to neutralize my emissions. And I dedicate my neutralization, which will be an investment in an incredibly efficient stove for a family in Nigeria, to Senator Sanders. Having said this, I think when we think about innovation, when we think about the forward-looking approaches, we have to think different areas. We have to think bold policy, innovative policies. We have to think about innovative business practices. We have to think about innovative citizen action, and we have to think innovative, forward-looking research. So let me give you a few examples from some areas, and then we can discuss some more. So one innovative, bold policy, which was innovated some time ago, but I think it was really a game changer, was the German feed-in tariff. The German feed-in tariff was very interesting because it allowed citizens, it allowed farmers to get involved in an area where the old utilities didn't want to invest, renewables, coming to a situation that we actually pushed from 6% of renewables to almost 40% today, driven by the population. It's great for the acceptance, that was innovative, and that actually was a model which spread. Second, if we think innovative business model, there is this company, it started with a young entrepreneur in his mid-20s, having the vision of bringing clean energy to rural Africa, eastern Africa, where he wanted to provide that to fight energy poverty, to fight poverty and create business opportunities. And he went there using the plummeting prices and cost of renewable photovoltaics. And he used digitalization. And in combination, he attracted more than 100 million of investment dollars. He has now seven, and it's not even 10 years in, 700 employees in 12 countries and provides 600,000 people with clean energy, wanting to expand that to 20 million in 2023. And with this kind of spirit, I think he could do it. Third innovative approach, I think, I mean, you could also look to the biggest lithium-ion battery ever now installed in Australia. That is a Tesla battery, and it's giving great ancillary services, meaning stabilizing services to the grid in a context where we have a lot of renewables maybe needing that. So that is innovation, but I want to look more to Chile. You can look all over the world, that's the nice thing, to Chile. They are innovative in that way that they turn around their policy. They were heavily coal and gas dependent, and then they had kind of a energy security dip when the imported gas wasn't delivered anymore. That's kind of painful. So they figured they have to change strategy and they found they have a desert. Deserts are good for solar. And the nice thing is you don't have a "not in my backyard" phenomenon there, NIMBY phenomenon, because there is basically nobody. You can really spread out your solar. So that's what they now do. They really want to go strong in renewables. They have by now 40% renewables, they want to go 60% by 2035. And they're just discussing this year, a coal phase out. So I think that is an innovative policy approach for Chile.
Let me begin the discussion by asking you, if we had sane leadership in the United States and around the world, if we were able to take on the power of the fossil fuel industry, from an energy point of view, what would the world look like?
I want to see that world. I think it would look like very different, but I think we have to say, we all have to become a bit saner than we are today. That means, how do we consume? What do we drive? So I think it's a back and forth between the people and the policymakers. Who do we vote for? So I think it's a back and forth. And in this future situation, let's think of a city. Because I think it's very different if you're in a rural area, if you're in a city's area, the solutions are different. But if you think city, for example, our concept of mobility will be very different than today. It's more about, how do I get from here to there, and less about my car, my parking lot, my, my, my. So you go into a sharing economy and they will be driven, hopefully, by electric mobility. And the electricity obviously comes from renewable sources. We will have improved storage capacities, for example, in batteries, as we just talked about, and things like that. So it will look very different from today and we will think much more about our choices. And by the way, that does not only affect things which are relevant for the energy system, but also plastic, or it will just be a different society and better for the little ones we love.
Well, first of all, thank you so much in part for bringing, reminding us that this is, they don't call it global warming for nothing. This is the first truly global problem we've faced. We've talked a lot tonight about the United States because we're in the US Senate and because this is, you know, where we have some purchase here. But it was reminding me, as you were talking, of just amazing scenes that I've witnessed in parts of rural Africa where people had never had any energy before, you know? And the first energy they ever got came from solar panels. We take, you know, for us, if you get a solar panel on the roof, it's nice, but you've had electricity your whole life. I remember sitting around a group of elders and they kept handing me cold bottles of water to drink, and I was grateful because it was hot as heck in Ivory Coast. But it took me a little while to figure out why they were so proud to be doing this, until the week before, there'd never been anything cold in this place before. It's a miracle that you can point a sheet of glass at the sun and out the back comes light and cold and information. I mean, that's Hogwarts scale magic, you know? And the fact that we don't, that we're not jumping on it as, with everything we have is a sign of our own, well, I think mostly of the shortsightedness of the fossil fuel industry, which is why I was also glad that you talked about the energiewende and the feed-in tariff and things. Talk a little bit about how the profits from renewable energy in Germany or elsewhere often flow to the consumer, to the citizens' groups, associations, churches, things like that, that sponsor and own some of these installations? Because I think that's an important part of making them acceptable.
So first of all, if you, the nice thing of the energiewende in Germany is the citizens' involvement, the community involvement. So obviously, they had different kind of choices they could make, either hand out the land and then allow them and get some rent on it, or even build themselves. So the models differed, but in any case, there were communities who said, okay, we tender the land or we tender the opportunity to build, and then you grant us a certain margin of your profit. And with that, they were able to finance, for example, the kindergarten or similar things. And overall, I think also the job creation in this decentralized system also helped the community. Overall, more than 300,000 jobs were created in Germany in the renewable sector. And if a farmer built on his own area, the windmill or so, he got the profit just for himself. So that was good for him. And overall, it's, I think it was more than a million private citizens and small entrepreneurs being involved. And it's more than half of the new renewables were actually owned by citizens, farmers, the communities.
Shaleen?
Just a small question about public perception and what you've witnessed, you know, in your country and how that shifted because of what was created and what is being creative.
People for the longest time were in love with solar PV. People for the longest time were in love with solar PV. They just loved solar PV, maybe because we are not sunny. It's kind of the idea of the sun or something, I don't know. They loved solar PV. And that helped actually supporting a scheme which cost them money, because at the initial phase, we had support solar energy with public, within the public scheme. The nice thing is that our trigger to wind and solar helped reduce the cost to where we are today. So I think that's our big contribution from Germany to climate protection. And now there is obviously also a debate how to go further. Still, I think the ownership, the public ownership helps, but it doesn't help with everything, because not everybody owns. And then you have to change infrastructures. And then there are the grids to be built. And then you have public debates over where to, the grid to go. And so it doesn't come without challenges, I must admit. And some people say, we want to have tourism, others say, we want to have offshore wind farms. So how do you combine this? Can you combine this? I think the important thing is there to have the community be involved, be heard, and find a solution. Maybe it doesn't fit with everybody, and we have to think about the common good we are working towards, but involve them, let them be heard, and make it as good as it can be with the goal you have in mind.
You seem pumped. So that's, that's good. Because we started off kind of bummed, and now it's just getting better and better, and you're kind of like global light bulb. So I think that's good. I also just want to brag a little bit that we are fighting here in the US. We did get beat in Washington State. The bad guys put in a bunch of money, Washington State beat us there, beat us in Colorado. But in Portland, a, the communities, was it a coalition of communities of color, got together and got everybody lined up, and they were able to pass a ballot measure to take $30 million from big box stores and put that into creating green jobs and solar panels and that type of stuff. Portland also dreams of the sun, apparently, just like the folks in Berlin. And it's a real victory. And it's a victory based on people coming together across different lines. And as like Alexandria was saying, nobody got left out, nobody got thrown under the bus, and they were able to win. And I think one of the things that we forget is that this is cool stuff. I mean, the people who are doing this here and around the world are cool people, having, you know, a big fight, but also having a good time, sometimes getting a chance to win, sometimes getting a chance to meet famous movie stars. This is not, this is not a bad night for me. So can you talk a little bit about just, there's a politics of joy that I think is just below the surface in terms of public perception? Because you were at Standing Rock. You know, Standing Rock created a whole boom of love and joy, and you seem to be a part of that. Can you just talk a little bit about, this is a community of awesome, weird, wonderful people around the world that we get, and the doors open, anybody can join?
Oh, well, coming from a research institute, I feel honored to be awesome, weird. Third thing, wild. Anyway, I can tell you about a few moments of joy I had, and then you have the dips in between. So one moment of joy was in 2007. Why was that? We were in Bali. And Bali, we were negotiating in the UN Climate Negotiations, where do we go towards a next international agreement? It was about, do we get a mandate to negotiate our future in this setting? And it was a very, very difficult negotiation also with the US, very difficult. And at the end, we got the deal. We called it Bollywood, because just, you know, like in a good Hollywood movie, just before the end, we thought, oh, God, it's gonna crash, it's gonna crash, and then we actually got it. And that was Bollywood. So that was a happy moment. But then you saw, two years later, when we wanted to sign the deal, and actually, a lot had happened to bring the issue to the heads of state level. More than 100 heads of state came, and we had Copenhagen, the negotiations didn't come out as we wanted to. But then, just a few years later, happy moment again, the Paris Agreement. So that is now the framework we as a world want to work under, work within, work towards, the Paris Agreement, meaning a global effort, a common global effort toward climate protection and adaptation in a solidarity system. So I could talk on, but I don't have time.
Let me ask you this, as somebody who, you know, has an understanding of what's going on on the planet. Do you perceive that there is a growing sense of urgency about the need for a very aggressive response to climate change? Are these reports that you've been a part of making people in countries aware that, man, if we're going to save our country and this planet, we have to move and move very quickly and boldly? Are you sensing some of that?
I think that we are starting to feel a lot of the impacts of rising temperature. You see the coral reefs, you see the storms, you see the droughts. I talk to people in Germany who tell me in the forest that the German oak will actually have difficult times, and they are asking themselves what to plant today to harvest in 100 years, because we're gonna have weather like in Spain, which might be nice, you know, in some respect, but anyway, not good for our trees. So I think that just makes it very immediate that we are living in a changing climate and that we have to react. That doesn't mirror yet in the action we need, but I think it's building up. And the good thing is, if you look at investments, 70% of the new capacity installed in 2017, 70% was renewable. And most of the money goes to renewables, outpacing both nuclear and coal. So I think they are good signs.
Let me do this, because we have to wrap up pretty soon, but Van, and somewhat everybody...
I just want to say, I'm a part of a group called Green for All. Not Green for Some, but greenforall.org. And part of our mission, our mandate, is to say that, you know, solar panels don't put themselves up, wind turbines don't manufacture themselves, new forests don't plant themselves. Everything that's good for the planet is a job, it's a contract, it's a business opportunity for somebody. So we can't fight pollution and poverty at the same time by taking the people who most need work and giving them a chance to do the work that most needs to get done, you know, re-powering the country and the world in a clean and green way. And I just, you know, wanted to point that out, you know, that there's something, there's something that can happen globally that we can learn from each other and we can help each other. And, you know, the folks in the so-called slums, and the folks in the so-called hood, and the folks in the villages and the townships or whatever, that we all pretty much have the same problem. And we also, I think, have the same solution. And I just wanted to brag on Green for All, and I appreciate you.
Shailene, parting thoughts about maybe what you learned tonight, or what your thoughts are for the future?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of want to echo what you said about joy and about hope. And, you know, it's so easy to feel so much fear when we talk about climate change, because there is a lot of fear that is present. But there is so much work that is already being done, and so many people who are activated, and being here and knowing that, you know, however many people are streaming this online, and I guess I just, I'm constantly in rooms in my world, in my industry, where people are now starting to talk about climate change, where three years ago, when I would mention it, nobody, nobody had the, you know, wanted to listen, or nobody had questions to ask. And now people are eager and curious to learn. And what Alexandria said about courage, we're starting to see that more and more with this movement, because we're starting to see people go, wait, if we don't have a planet, nothing else matters. None of these other movements matter. Everything that I'm a part of doesn't matter. So I just feel very joyful right now, and I feel very excited, and we have a lot of work to do, but knowing that we're all going to do it together is just, oh, it's amazing.
Well, look, you know, I wrote the first book about climate change 30 years ago, so I've had as long a time as almost anybody on the planet to think about this and deal with it. We could have seized this moment 30 years ago. In this Congress, Jim Hansen, our greatest climate scientist, came and said, here's what's going to happen, let's get to work. We didn't seize the moment because the fossil fuel industry got in the way. 20 years ago, we were at Kyoto, the world coming together for the first time. We could have done it, but no, Exxon at all made sure that nothing happened. 10 years ago, at Copenhagen, we could have used, as you said, Dr. Bausch, could have seized the moment there and nothing happened. In the last 10 years, there's been the beginnings of a real movement building. And Bernie, you've been a big part of that. I mean, when we started the fight against the Keystone Pipeline, there was literally no other politician in Washington who had the slightest interest in talking to us about this, because it was not popular.
True story.
When people went to Standing Rock, when people built the divestment movement that now has passed $7 trillion, when now we see the Sunrise Movement and people, we better damn well seize this moment, because the physics and chemistry of climate change mean we do not get an endless series of moments to seize. If we don't seize this one, when we come back in 10 years, we're going to be doing the eulogy, not the, you know, not the pep rally. So this has got to be the moment. And I'm just so thankful for the energy here. I was asking Van earlier, how many people watch CNN on a given night? Maybe on a good night, 700,000. We've got way more than that tuned into Climate News Network tonight, watching, millions of people watching this around the country. In the end, in the end, in the end, what changes things is movements. That's what shifts the zeitgeist and lets us do the work that needs doing. We won this argument 25 years ago. The science was entirely clear, the argument was over, but the fight, so far, we've lost, because fights are about power and money. And now we've got to bring that power ourselves, and tonight's a big part of that. So thank you, Senator Sanders, for organizing this, and thanks to everybody who's out there doing this work day in, day out.
Let me thank Dr. Bausch for being with us, thank all of you for being here, and the many people who are watching online. Look, we are living in a moment in history that has never existed before. The best minds in the world are telling us literally that we have 12 years, which is no time at all, to get our act together if we are going to leave our kids and grandchildren with a planet that is healthy and habitable. That's the bad news. But the good news, and I think, you know, Van raised that issue, and Bill picked up on it, and Shailene as well, is that I want you to think for a moment, I don't want to be too utopian here, but think for a moment that instead of spending well over $1 trillion on weapons of destruction to figure out how we kill each other, think about making that investment in transforming our energy system. Think about how we can bring the entire world together in common cause. We're all in this together. You're in China, you're in Iran, you're in Saudi Arabia, you're in the United States. We are all in this together. And our job is to be bold, to think very big, and to go forward in a moral struggle that says that we will protect the well-being of my seven grandchildren and all the children of the world. Thank you all very much for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Bernie.